My sister said they were black. She saw the mom real well.
They got both out there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We saw Alk and we saw, we did see one sheep. We was big. Tell us what I think up on. Glass and then we're in Yellowstone. Oh, of course. The country was. Seeing the shadows. First day was, the colors were all of them, so we get the colors. It was cool. Oh, and the way Alk, the first day Alk stopped in. Two or those. That's the grand team top. We got out there and there was a blizzard morning in the mountains on Friday and Saturday. He did, he did, he did. It was just a cold storm.
Interesting.
That was up by Jackson Light kind of detox.
That's it. Budget. Yeah, budget, yeah. It's just, it's just the presentation, yeah. They, the department heads tend to, kind of.
Good evening. I would like call to order the City of West Bend Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, approval minutes from September twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Zingstein, second. Alderman Schmidt. Is there any corrections or deletions? There are none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMPW one seven dash zero five, Amendment Three. Good Shepherd. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This is another of those Stormwater Management Maintenance Agreements that we typically enter into with property owners where we issue Stormwater Management permits. So this one is for Good Shepherd on Decorum Road and Decorum in Indiana. We did approve a maintenance agreement for this development, I believe in August. But they are changing the type of facility, the type of treatment facility that they are going to use on their property. So we had to rerun the numbers and verify that that was still in compliance with the regulations. So we created an amendment for the permit and with this new system, we found that it will be compliant with everything. So we recommend that the board and council approve the agreement.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Berquist. Alderman Sparts. Are there any questions for Max? There are no questions. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works adjourned as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three items on our agenda this evening. The first one is the approval minutes from our regular meeting, September twenty second, twenty twenty five. Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingstein. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number two, Resolution Number Thirty Seven, authorizing the transfer of YARC funds for payment of expenses. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, everyone. This evening, our department is requesting to transfer one thousand dollars from the YARC account, which is our therapeutic, therapeutic recreation account to an expense account for supplies for our Special Olympics program. Currently, there is thirty thousand dollars in this account and the funds that are in that account originate from donations. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Berquist and Alder, sorry, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Schmidt. Any questions for Mike? They're being done. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next and final agenda item is Resolution Number Thirty Six, to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Department.
Thank you. So before I present the donations, the fourth donation, a forty-five thousand dollars for a sculpture, we would like to remove that from the agenda. We have already mentioned it to the clerk's office. So the resolution that would be signed, that has already been removed. That project, that donation, that process is just not ready to come before a common council yet. There's other items that go with it. It's not just a sculpture. It's installs and benches, floodplain analysis. Many other boxes need to be checked before we bring it to this governing body. So this evening, we have three donations to present to the common council. The first donation of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars was donated by West Bend Friends of Skate Park. These funds will be used for the design and construction documents for the new skate park. The skate park proposal will come before the common council on October twentieth. We didn't have time to get it on for tonight's agenda, but we still wanted to bring the donation forward. These funds will be used again for the design and construction documents, marketing documents for the new skate park. We would also like to highlight that Mike Nass and the Nass family committed fifty thousand dollars to this project already. Mike realized that funding would be needed just for the planning and engineering, the RFP that we sent out, things like that. So Mike donated, donated those funds to the Friends of West Bend Skate Park. And tonight, we are bringing forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of that forward for the future skate park. Again, the RFP, the proposal will come before a common council on October twentieth, but we still wanted to bring those funding, that funding source forward to the group this evening. Second donation of four hundred dollars is donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club for Riverside Disc Golf Course. And the third donation for this evening is seven hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents was donated by Lynch Motor Vehicle Group for our Special Olympics program. So again, thank you to all of our donors that continue to support our many different programs and projects in West Bend.
Thank you very much for bringing those before us. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions or comments? Again, I thank those donors for, again, generously donating to our community. It makes part of living in West Bend the great experience it is for all. So again, thank you for that. With that, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It is Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five, and this is a meeting of the common council of the City of West Bend. More than twenty-four hours in advance of tonight's meeting. Notice the time, place, date and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
It has been.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. John, I'm sure it was somebody in your division that put the Halloween lights on City Hall. I noticed over the weekend, it looks really cool. I don't remember that being done, but you'll get a glimpse of it in the dark when you leave tonight. Looks pretty cool. Thanks for doing that. Our first item of business is approval of our common council regular meeting minutes from September twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to read a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas in nineteen twenty-two, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the week of October eighth as Fire Prevention Week in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire and Peshtigo Fire, which began on October eighth, eighteen seventy-one. And whereas, excuse me, City of West Bend Fire and Rescue are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. The twenty twenty-five Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, effectively serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Whereas, most of the electronics used in homes daily include smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire or explode. And whereas, City of West Bend residents will make sure they are responsive to public education measures and assure the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries to help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. Now therefore, I, Joe Langer, the mayor, do hereby proclaim October fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty five, as Fire Prevention Week throughout our community. And I urge all the people of the City of West Bend to practice fire safety and to participate in the public safety activities of the City of West Bend Fire and Rescue Services during Fire Prevention Week of twenty twenty five. I'd like to invite our Division Chief of Community Risk Reduction and Life Safety, Chief Dave Mayer, to come and talk about Fire Prevention Week. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the West Bend Fire Department, I would like to thank you for the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Your continued support helps us promote safety, education and preparedness throughout our community. We already kicked off Fire Prevention Week with our Doors Open event on Saturday. I don't know if anybody had a chance, Mr. Mayor stopped by. Couple of, couple of folks did. So we had a really good showing with the community, some fire safety presentations, firehouse tour and a lot of great community engagement. Families got to explore the station as well and learning those valuable safety skills. It ranged from children all the way up to folks that aren't children. So there was opportunities for everybody to learn something. Throughout the month, our crews are visiting local schools to deliver fire safety and prevention preparedness, which again, we started a little early. I was actually at one of our schools on, on Friday, and so we have another three scheduled for this week. We host, are hosting station tours and an initiative that once I attain this position, it's called Project Firesafe, which is smoke detectors for everyone, it's an acronym, where we canvass the area where there was an incident to make sure that the neighbor, the neighborhood in that area does have smoke alarms in their houses. And so those are donated for the department so that we make sure that the, we just get out and canvass to make sure that the neighborhoods are safe. These efforts reflect our department's mission to protect lives and property through prevention, education and service. So together with community partners and residents, we build safer and stronger communities in West Bend. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our Downtown Master Plan Quarterly Report. John Fellows will give us that report.
Good evening. Just a really quick update here for our quarterly report for the third part of this year. We had a really good, successful year of planting and vegetation downtown with support from the city as well as the bid. I think everybody will agree the plants came in much better this year than the first year last year. So lots of compliments the city has received for that as well as the bid. And we have a lot of things coming up here. The mums are just about ready to pop. And looking towards November, we'll have the tree lighting ceremony in the first Thursday of November. We also have a new sculpture. I'm sure you've heard of that. That's over up in the, the Greenway area in the Village Greenway, north of thirty-three. It's quite a nice sculpture. So if you haven't checked that out, please do so. I think it was installed just about thirty days ago. And then, of course, you're all aware of the new Fire Museum, but that's also a significant component to downtown. That announcement bringing in more tourism and starting to, once it's up and going, we'll have some more synergy in that part of downtown. But that's a quick update.
Any questions for John? Thank you very much. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. Items four, five and six on your council agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingstein and Alderman Sparts. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to agenda items for consideration. Our first is ordinance number fifteen, Permanent Relocation of District Five and District Six Polling Locations. Who's taking us through that one? Clerk?
I can certainly.
All right.
So we were notified by the Washington County clerk that we will not be able to use that facility any longer for elections, for one of our polling locations. They are doing some remodeling and it's no longer a space we can go. We've also kind of been hearing that the PA Center, PA, PAC Center is not going to be available in the future. What that future is, we aren't exactly sure. So when, when Maureen Technical College remodeled, we went and looked at a space that was absolutely beautiful and could hold three of our districts. So we thought we would try to consolidate three of our districts into one location. The room is, can be, it's actually two rooms, but could, can be down to one if we have a primary like in February and it's going to be a smaller turnout. We, our IT looked at it, liked the space as well, and it just made sense to us to try to consolidate some of our polling locations to save on IT resources, election inspectors, as it's getting more and more difficult, to try to recruit election inspectors to work. Bless you. And then with preparing for elections as well, it takes us weeks to prepare and to get everything ready for each polling place. So that kind of wraps it up. We, we did a lot of research and are looking to consolidate as much as we can. And about over fifty percent of our residents do vote absentee ballot, by absentee ballot. The presidential election was probably about fifty-three to fifty-four percent that vote either by mail or they come into the office for in-person absentee voting. If this is approved, we would, of course, do a lot of advertising signage, just like we did this year when we changed District One and District Eight. With that, I'll entertain questions.
I have a question or two or a concern because District Five is one of those included. What about heavy foot traffic having all three at the same location? And have they looked at the parking? I mean, how far away will people have to park to walk to the polling place?
It isn't that far for, at the Technical College, they have many entrance entrances. And of course, they're all ADA. The, the building where the room is, there's a ramp also to go up there. So there's a lot of room for people to, to walk. We also always accommodate though by curbside. If anyone wants to curbside vote, we have signage where they call and then two of our election inspectors go out to the car. So that's always an option too, if people are concerned about, you know, walking into the building.
And is it more common for communities to have multiple districts at one voting location rather than having them in their neighborhoods?
It is more common that people are, or municipalities are combining locations and it is for a lot of the resources. Or it's, it was really difficult when we were trying to find a location in that district because there's not a lot of options. The schools no longer want us in there. They haven't for several years because of the school shootings, all the safety concerns. So when we did look in that area, we had a couple, but it wasn't really feasible. Or it was, it would be more difficult to try to accommodate people in that district. So there's always lots of challenges, but it is common for municipalities to combine locations.
Okay, thank you.
For reference, they had the United Way kickoff in the room where the, this will be held and it was, there were, it was packed. And it wasn't, it was certainly less of a walk than it would be to vote at the library to get into that room. And it was, I mean, there's a big lot that's right there. It's more long than it is deep. So it's pretty easy to get into that room.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate you mentioning the mail-in voting because I imagine that as, as Alderman Sizer was kind of mentioning, Alderwoman Sizer, excuse me, yeah, there's increased distance, I guess, for the folks that would otherwise have gone to one place. And so if they, and I wonder if there's any attempt to sort of advertise the mail-in option for people who don't necessarily want to go to a new place or something like that.
Washington County has actually been doing that for us for advertising. Usually every election, they're putting out a flyer with all the municipalities in Washington County with their hours of, of when in-person absentee voting is. But we always put it on our website. There's a public notice that's required by state statute. So there is a lot of, of advertising publications that we do.
Sorry, that includes mail-in, you said? You said in-person absentee, like, like just the mail-in voting for folks who didn't, you know, maybe had mobility concerns or something like that, getting to the polls?
Yep, mail, mail-in voting is always, is very popular here as well. And that continues. And we put out a notification too of when that, when, when we start mailing those out because it changes from election to election, a federal election, we have to send them out much earlier than a regular election.
With District Six being affected, I guess that's, means I'm gonna have to drive farther to vote. I hate to see it being moved so far away, but I understand the reasons. And there really isn't any other place in District Six that would be feasible that I could see, thinking about it. Also, I'm seeing this actually, does this work out as a cost savings for the city by putting three locations in one spot?
It does affect costs because we can use, use less Badger books, less election inspectors, less staff time. So it does help with our budget. Yes, you might have to go to a little bit farther. When we were looking, one of our, our places that we looked at was one of the hangars out at the airport. But then it's like, okay, who's gonna plow the snow because we don't do that? So there's, you know, we, we can't always think that, oh, well, it's an April election. We always have to be thinking of the general elections and the traffic that might be there. And we always think of worst case scenario, unfortunately, like a blizzard. Who's gonna be doing all the things where, you know, now at our locations? We know who are, who's going to do those resources. We have DPW. So if you come up with ideas, I'd be happy to explore them. Our police chief chimed in, Mike Yanched chimed in of some places. And, and, you know, we, we try to do our best, but when we saw this facility, it was, it just, you know, with the technology, some of the places don't have a lot of electrical outlets. Well, we have to have those for Badger books. So there's a lot of factors into us trying to find a space and, and this will be a change and change is hard, I know. Does it answer your questions? Okay.
Anybody else? Do you anticipate, let me rephrase that. The rest of the, the rest of the polling locations, are they good to go for twenty twenty-six? Or do you think there could be changes even before April?
The rest of the polling locations, as far as we know, we do not have any changes. We probably will have a primary in February. State's kind of saying over ninety percent chance that we probably will. Right now, though, we haven't had anyone else state that we cannot go into those locations.
Actually, can I just comment on that? Are there any considerations of, with the repairs and stuff going on in the library, that polling location for District Two will be impacted? Or should that be finished by election time?
We have not been told anything about the library. And I do not know about the repairs and the, and timelines. But that's a good question and I can write that down and find out.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig, and second by Alderman Buchlich. Any more discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we'll move on to Resolution Number Thirty Five, which is amending the traffic manual for the City of West Bend. Chief Dering.
Good evening, everyone. On September twenty-sixth, we had our Fall Traffic Safety Commission meeting. Alderman Schmidt's going to report on that very shortly in the report section. The one item that we're asking for you to move forward is really administrative in nature. I'd like to thank my partners on the Traffic Commission, Doug and Max and my partner Megan, for being very meticulous about our manual and making sure it's up to date. So this change that's in front of you, adding redwood, it's already posted and enforced. This is the two-hour limit that's within that entire area. It just wasn't added, it was missed in the manual. So we're just asking to add that to make the manual accurate.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingstein and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. And now we'll go into a review of our twenty twenty-six budget. Jesse.
All right, thank you very much. So this evening, we are going to be focusing on a review of the general fund portion of the budget. This is the twenty twenty-six proposed budget. Just by way of context, the general fund is the most significant tax levy funded portion of the overall budget documented, about seventy percent of where our tax levy goes. That said, tonight, I will also be touching on some general budget facts and figures as well. It's important to note that the twenty twenty-six proposal maintains and/or improves municipal services. By law, the budget must be presented in a balanced nature. We have no use of fund balance programmed for this budget and it is in fact a balanced proposal. With that, I want to start off with one of those general budget facts and figures. The recommended overall tax levy for the twenty twenty-six budget comes in at twenty-eight million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. This is a seven point one percent increase. Tax levy is the primary source of revenue for the City of West Bend and we are not unique in that nature. That is a state, Wisconsin statewide matter of attention in that the way we are formulated here in this state, every municipality. here in this state, every municipality relies heavily on property tax revenue as its primary source of revenue. That said, we do have a diverse, diversified revenue base in that we look at interest earnings, we look at permits, we look at rental fees, we look at intergovernmental funds. But tax levy remains the primary source. With that, the tax levy is used to fund the following areas within the budget. As I mentioned, the general fund, the library, TID apportionment, as well as debt service. Those are the four areas in which tax levy is applied. And I'd like to go into each of those areas in particular and speak to them appropriately. So by way of those four areas, how is the tax levy used in each of those, or how much of the tax levy is used in each of those program areas, we'll call them? The general fund comes in at just south of about seventy percent of the tax levy allocations. TID apportionment comes in at about eleven percent, library four percent, and the remaining sixteen percent as debt service. So I'd like to start by speaking to the general fund. This sees, this particular area of tax, tax levy allocations is growing by about two-point-eight percent. By way of context, the State Department of Administration has reported the Consumer Price Index, or the inflationary pressure, as two-point-seven percent. So the vast majority of the village's budget is actually within, uh, uh, city, wow. Pardon me, I will just excuse myself. Whew. Wow. That was a slip. My apologies. Of the ci, I was doing really well up until that point, too. That being said, that is within that same area of the city's largest portion of its budget being in accord with that inflationary pressure. The library is seeing about a five-point-eight percent increase in tax levy allocations. TID apportionment is seeing a fourteen-point-two percent increase. And I'd like to break that down a little bit and talk more about that. So what is TID apportionment? TID apportionment is tax levy that is allocated for the distribution of increment, or those tax rev, or levy revenues, within the various districts, tax incremental districts. The city has multiple districts, and we are actively utilizing that as an economic development tool. This tax levy allocation within those districts is based upon state of Wisconsin-established property values within those individual districts. So the number is actually driven by property valuation established by the state. Now, that increment, as, as many know, but want to make sure we cover this base, the increment is used for such things as project costs, administrative costs, and TID-related debt service. Now, one of the more significant upticks, as you can see laid out there, is for debt service. This should not come as a surprise necessarily, as the city made it a very significant point and a concerted effort to discuss this at great lengths, to make a commitment for a new fire station and training facility. With that, that new debt service is being realized, and that is the primary driver of that uptick of that tax levy allocation. By way of context, without the commitment for that new fire station and facilities, the debt service allocation would have come in at about four percent. So it was a significant commitment made by the city for a very good reason and purpose. That being said, it is recognized here within the budget. Now, as I mentioned, the general fund is the largest portion of the budget that funds the vast majority of city operations. Everything from the clerk's office, the police department, fire department, parks and recreation, legal, administration, so on and so forth. With that, it is my pleasure to, again, make it a point to present the fact that the general fund increase or adjustment is in line with the Consumer Price Index, or the Inflationary Index. The fund balance that is presented as part of the budget proposal remains healthy at a twenty-eight percent. The minimum recommendation is maintaining a seventeen percent. So we are healthy, we are well above that minimum, minimum recommendation. We are see, we are anticipating an uptick of overall revenues. But then the general fund is not impacted, but adjusted to see several capital items moved into the general fund because they are more of an ongoing maintenance function or a smaller project that is not requiring borrowed funds. Examples include tree and brush cutting at the airport, the traffic signals maintenance, mastic supplies, which falls under a road maintenance type of program, wireless network upgrades, and street tree planting. Some other areas of the general fund are adjusted through quote-unquote "right sizing." We take a look at the ba, all of the budget allocations in various departments, and we did right-size a bit based upon trend analysis and really doing a deep dive in some of the needs and wants within those, or behind the requests that were being made. Well, not a huge swing. It is very helpful in doing that exercise to provide a better overall and accurate picture within that general fund portion of the budget. Attorney's fees, audit, federal funds, the auditing of federal funds are a couple of examples there. Postponement of the citywide, planned citywide revaluation project, it is unnecessary expense at this time. This is something we will have to monitor and keep an eye on because by state law, the state of Wisconsin sets an equalized valuation of all properties that is intended to provide a level playing field per property values throughout the state of Wisconsin. A single-family home here in West Bend versus a single-family home in Rhinelander under the equalized value system at the state, that is supposed to provide a comparable look at what a property would be valued at. Now, the city does an assessment of property values for the purposes of calculating tax bills. And that assessment by law needs to be within a percentage of the equalized value. We are close on being too far out of, away from that percentage, and we need to monitor that. So therefore, we will have to do a revaluation. And really, what's causing that is the ongoing market fluctuations of property values. Because property values can be based upon sales and whatnot. And so, again, with the very inflammatory market, we are seeing a lot of swings there. And so this is something we constantly monitor. Right now, at this time, we do not need a revaluation. So therefore, we are postponing that, and we will look to that in the future. You will see it within the general fund and IT, the Information Technology Department shows a bit of a change there. This is due to the fact we consolidated various existing technology items under the IT budget. This is to really help and facilitate their billing and oversight of these items, such as licenses, and oversight of how those licenses are utilized instead of being delegated out to the individual departments and having Information Technology try to track it across multiple areas of the budget. Really brought that under one umbrella because they have that oversight. Therefore, while it looks as though a significant change was made to the IT budget, it was actually a lot of existing items moved into that bucket, so to speak. This budget proposal does address the uptick in insurance premiums, both workman's comp and health insurance, but also ensuring appropriate coverage across the board for city facilities and vehicles and whatnot. The general fund budget does include several staffing updates. We have an additional FTE in the DPW. We have an additional FTE in Parks, Recreation, Forestry. We have reclassification of the airport superintendent position from part-time to full-time. The reasoning behind that is we have a longstanding effort in that airport improvement slash expansion project. This will look to help facilitate not only that through consistent and regular communications with the FAA and contact at that federal level and state level, but also just general project management and oversight of the day-to-day operations over at the airport. So we're looking to make that change within this budget. But also, within the clerk's office, a reclassification of the office technician position to an assistant deputy clerk. What we're looking to do here is match a title and rate of pay that is consistent with the job duties. Currently, the office technician does a lot of heavy lifting with regards to licensure, and it is important that we recognize that, and we are looking to reclassify that position as part of this 2026 budget. Now, one of the big questions comes from what does that overall tax levy mean for an average homeowner within the city? Well, the tax rate is a function of the valuation of all the properties within the city versus that overall levy number, which, again, is twenty-eight million, three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. So you take that across and apply that to the properties across the city. And also taking into consideration what needs to be collected with regards to funding the operations, as well as debt service commitments. We utilize, we utilize all these facts and figures to come forward with an estimated tax rate of six dol, city tax rate of six dollars and forty-six cents per one thousand dollars of assessed value. And the reason for that clarification of city tax rate is because on the property tax bills, this all, the property tax bills also include the tax rate for the school district, the county, and the Technical College. So with that, we are proposing a six dollar and forty-six cent per one thousand dollar of assessed valuation for the city's tax rate. However, I want to go back and revisit the commitment made by the city with regards to the construction of the new fire station because, again, tax levy goes towards debt service commitments. Without the commitment of the construction of the new fire station, the tax rate would have equated to approximately six dollars and thirty-four cents per one thousand dollars of property valuation. So there would be a difference there. However, again, this is a very purposeful commitment made towards that facility construction and improvement. For comparison purposes, the 2025 city tax rate was six dollars and ten cents per one thousand dollars of valuation. So now to walk through how that valuation is calculated, just for information purposes. That twenty-eight million of tax levy translates to an individual property tax bill through the average home, for the average home in West Bend being valued at just over three-hundred-thousand dollars. Apply that tax rate of six dollars and forty-six cents per one thousand. Multiply them together, and you end up with that one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollar and twenty-eight, six cent, twenty-six cent estimated average tax bill for a single-family home here within the city. Now, these are based on assumptions and are subject to change. And again, it does not, that, that rate does not, or amount, excuse me, does not reflect taxes levied by other jurisdictions. So the calculations as a whole are subject to change as the city is, has yet to receive its manufacturing property values from the state of Wisconsin, as well as the tax levy figures from the school district and the county. The budget information associated with the capital improvement plan and the related borrowing will be discussed in greater detail at the October twentieth Common Council meeting. And prior to my closing, I just want to say a couple of thank yous. Thank you very much, first of all, to the departments for their timely and financially prudent requests. Thank you to Chief Dearing for getting us to this point, for me to take the baton and run with it, kind of like a blister showing up when much of the work is done with regards to the budget process. But that said, we've gotten to this point and looking forward to finishing it out. But last, but certainly not least, I also want to thank the Finance Department for their help in preparing this information for presentation this evening. With that, I am available to answer questions.
Thank you, Jesse.
Jesse, so you said this rate is based on some assumptions. Maybe I missed that. Did you cover that?
Certainly. Well, fir, the first assumption is we applied the, well, the rate itself is based upon assumptions of we do not have our final manufacturing figures yet, property values yet. That can impact the rate. So that, that is the primary assumption there with regards to the rate itself.
Thank you. How about capital borrowing? I know we're gonna discuss that in a couple of weeks. Is there an assumption already in the debt service portion of this budget that we're assuming that we're gonna have a capital project list of four million dollars, for instance? Or does that question make sense?
Yes, I believe I understand where you're going with that. And yes, the, the debt service calculation does take into account not only what we have done to date, but what is planned. Yep.
Other questions? Go ahead. Don't be shy.
Well, I don't have any questions about it. I wanted to wait for the rest of the council to see if there are any other immediate questions that come to mind. And if not, then I'll, again, I want to echo Jesse's sentiment in thanking Chief Dearing and Carey, as well as the entire department head team who went through the, the transition of city administrators in this budget. And I know that that city department head team worked very, very hard in looking at their needs within their departments, but also, also understanding the greater needs of the city and the needs, wants, desires of the taxpayers in the city of West Bend and being, being, looking at their budgets from an appropriate standpoint as relates to their needs and ensuring that we're being responsible with, with the funds that our citizens entrust us to invest in the continued operations of the city to provide those high levels of service, public safety, as well as a high quality of life here in the city of West Bend. So I want to reach out and thank all the city department heads, as well as Carey and Chief for leading that process, and then Jesse for carrying through that process. I think as a matter of, of process, as we look forward here, we all now have the budget in hand. If you've got any questions regarding individual items or light items within this budget, please reach out to Jesse. Please reach out to the mayor or myself, or reach out directly to the department heads within the areas where you might have some questions or concerns. As in past years, we have a, a large, well, we've got a month or so now between the time, month, month-plus, that we are looking at this budget. We've been presented with the initial budget and the time that we would look to ratify and approve a budget. You've heard this from me before, as you've heard from past finance chairs, the, the time to address those questions is between now and the time that we have that meeting, not at that meeting itself. So please take that as your responsibility moving forward to, to have a deep dive, look at and review this budget in detail. And then if there are any questions, make sure that those are asked and answered prior to the meeting at which we will look to ratify the 2026 budget. So those are my no comments. Thank you very much.
I'd like to echo the appreciation for all the work that went into this. Sorry to point this out, it might just be a sort of typo or something, but on, this would be page fifty-seven of the agenda, intergovernmental revenues. The service to state facilities amount is highlighted. I don't know if there's any reason for that, or if it's just sort of like, what was happening when it was printed?
General fund revenue budget. This is under intergovernmental revenues. Carey, do you know the answer to that? It's under intergovernmental revenues.
It may be insignificant, I'm just curious.
I can answer that real quick. So we are still waiting for that estimated amount from the state yet. So that's why it's highlighted.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we still waiting on a lot of those intergovernmental revenues for this year? It seems like there's a lot of money that's, like, shared, shared taxes from the state, for instance, close to two million dollars not received yet? Is that normal?
Yes, that is normal.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work. The approval of the budget will be the first meeting in November. And in two weeks, we'll see a presentation on the capital projects, which essentially is part of the debt service where we borrow money to do capital projects, things like fixing a boiler and replacing a, a road and things like that. So we'll see that in two weeks, and then the full budget for approval first week in November. So like Alderman Sternig said, if you have any questions between now and then, make sure you get them answered. And start with Jesse. And if Jesse needs to go to a department head or something, he'll help you do that and make sure that all your questions get answered. I, I appreciate you pointing out the, the Consumer Price Index of two-point- I, I appreciate you pointing out the, the consumer price index of 2.7. I was just looking at some history, you know, back in the, between 2015 and call it 2020, CPI was more around 0.8 to maybe 1.8. And the past handful of years, in 2022 was 8.5, then it was 3.2, 2.9, 2.9 and now 2.7. We all feel that at home. We all feel that in our daily lives and of course, we feel that here in the city of West Bend where things are just simply more expensive. And I, I truly believe, believe we run a lean, mean operation here and we provide exceptional services to our residents. If we want to get into the discussion of, you know, as an example, should we pick up garbage every two weeks instead of once a week? We can have those discussions. Those are tough discussions to have. I personally don't think our residents want to see us making a drastic, I would call it drastic, you know, it's garbage, but, but if we want to, if we want to have those discussions, those are the types of things where if we're really looking to cut big things, then we need to talk about that. For right now, this budget doesn't do that. It's providing the same level or even better level of services that our residents have, have come to enjoy and enjoy, you know, part of the reason they live here is because of those services. But again, it's still a lean, mean operation. So anyway, just wanted to kind of make that point, but if, again, if you have any questions, you've got about a month before this comes to you for approval, so make sure you schedule time and get your questions answered. Any, anything else before we move on? All right, we'll move on to our reports tonight. Parks and Rec Commission met on September 23rd. Mary Beth?
Okay, yeah, Park and Rec met on September 23rd. The meeting began with approval of the minutes for the August 14th meeting. Ryan spent a lot of time presenting on the Regner Park Beach annual report. So I'll just give you a few of those highlights and there are a lot of them, which is nice. Staffing was at, at the right level this year and will remain about the same next year. The first lifeguard training will already be held in November in preparation for 2026. The second one, Regner Beach was able to open 66 of 873 possible dates this year, so they were open for 494.5 hours. This was an increase from last year. The third high point, weekly water samples were submitted and always were safe and clean for users. Fourth, Regner Beach hosted 31,800 users this year. That was an increase of 117% over last year when the attendance was 14,659. Fifth, the goal for the Aqua Park was 18,200 users. That number was exceeded greatly. There were 25,527 users. The 2024 operating loss last year was $64,155. Compare that to the 2025 gain of 136,845. I think that's fantastic. Home addresses of our guests at the Aqua Park included people from California, Illinois, New York, Tennessee, Florida, Indiana, Pennsylvania, and Texas, as well as 86 cities in Wisconsin. Fantastic turnout. There were a few recommendations for next year, so those were discussed, but congratulations to the staff, Westbury Bank, and everyone who worked so hard to make this a great success. The West Bend Friends of Sculpture did present the donation for the sculpture and that was, that will be delayed, as Mike mentioned. We'll bring that to the council in the future, but that was discussed at the meeting also. You also heard about the generous donation from the Friends of the West Bend Skate Park. Fundraising efforts for that are expected to pick, kick off early in 2026, once the, once the design is established. The LLC Nature Playground ribbon cutting was successful. Future projects there included an entry arch, conversion of a shed to an open air shelter and a covered bridge overlook. And I'm going to add a note there, I, I was there Saturday with my granddaughter and she had a blast. She spent some time actually tidying up the kitchen area or the store area. She said it was messy. There were toys on the floor, so she tidied it, but she had a blast. Great addition. The Lac Lloran Luminary Walk is October 18th. Enchantment in the Park setup begins mid-October. Nature in the Classroom begins in October. West Bend Library is currently holding their nature storytime at Lac Lloran. And as always, many, many staff members in many departments are juggling a variety of tasks to make our city the beautiful nature playground we all love. So thank you always to the staff of Park, Rock and Forestry, they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Traffic Safety Commission met on September 29th.
And I will take that.
Over here, all right.
So we had a full quorum that evening and so it was nice to see everybody. We had five items on the agenda. The first was to approve the, the minutes from the previous meeting, which was April 28th and that was approved. Then we went into the discussion and potential action items. The first one was consideration of a request to restrict parking on Barton Avenue at the intersection of Barton Avenue and Parkfield Drive. Apparently there was a study done, what, five years ago, Chief? 2020? And there was some action taken on that, at that point to remove one parking space on the north end and I believe two on the south end of that, that intersection. But there were some constituents that were hoping we could remove more on the north end. We discussed that and it came down to, we directed Max to go back and take a look at that study, make sure we weren't missing anything there and so we'll debrief with him on that, but we didn't take any action on this, bottom line. The next item was to consider a request to implement a no passing zone on River Road at Roscoe. The consensus of the commission was to wait on that because we've got, we've got some current development and some future development potentially in that area and we felt that it was best to let that settle down before we made a decision on that. The next one was, next item was consider a request to restrict parking on Redwood Street east of Acadia. That's already been discussed and approved tonight. And then the last thing was a consideration for a request to install a four-way stop at Seventh Avenue and Decorah Road. I'll just make a comment that there were, there was a lot of public interest in that and a lot of input. And I, kudos to the chief for allowing people to go up there and speak freely and in fact, sometimes a couple, three times. Some were emoting, which is fine too, as long as, you know, maintain your respect. But we did receive a lot of input. There obviously is, is a concern there, especially certain times of the day and, but we didn't feel that, that a four-way stop was a viable, effective option. In fact, could, could have potentially, and this is just me speaking, but could potentially be more of a negative impact on that intersection, so we did not take action on that. However, Chief said that we're going to, we're going to spend the next, is it three weeks, special enforcement in that area, just to keep an eye on that, see what comes out of that? Yeah, when is that going to start? Yes, okay. I didn't see the trailer, so I was wondering where that is. Where do we, where do we place that? What's that?
Our officers are in the area already.
Okay, great. But, but what about the trailer? Where, where did they put the trailer? I was just wondering.
Our officers are in the area, though. The trailer's still at the high.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. Sounds great. So with, with that, we adjourned.
Interesting meeting. Yeah. Very good. Jesse, administrator's report.
Yes, pleased to report the rollout of a new feature on our weekly e-newsletter, the West Bend Wire. This is a question and answer type of service, if you will, where the first question, as published on Friday, dealt with a commonly asked question about surrounding the purchase of the property for the new fire station. Working with the communications team and staff to put together a concise yet informative response to that general question that has been asked as of, as of late, has been, this feature's been well received. So the rules are, if you will, questions can be submitted to the administrator's office, place West Bend Wire in the title of the email, present your question and what we will do is work with staff, the communications team, to answer a question each week as part of that e-newsletter. And people have taken notice over the week. So we published our first edition of this as part of Friday's e-newsletter. Three more questions were received and are in the queue over the weekend, so we already have material to keep us working and it's a great start. Hopefully this will be a really nice communication tool for the city as far as questions asked, questions answered in a very concise manner, but also the reason we went the avenue of that e-newsletter as the framework for this tool is it's in a sense, a very controlled environment. We, we can avoid the give and take that social media can create from time to time. We can literally have question asked, question answered, and if folks wish to follow up on it, they can, absolutely. But it is a really nice forum for us to be able to address commonly asked questions that pop up. So anybody out there in your districts that you hear of have questions, please feel free. They can send me an email, just make sure to title it West Bend Wire, so I flag it to make sure it gets in the queue to be answered as part of our weekly newsletter. Thank you.
Cool. Are, are the previously asked questions going to be archived anywhere? That we can refer back to them or people can refer back to them?
What we can do is, that's an excellent question. We didn't even think about that. They would technically be archived, archived as part of that weekly newsletter publication, but I, let me work with the communications team to see if there's a, a little bit more of a easier access, kind of a file reference tool for council and staff. So it's West Bend, I'm sorry. So West Bend Wire, no dots or anything in between? Correct. West Bend Wire.
What's the email address to send it to? So it's, it's, it's his email.
It's coming to me.
And that's in, his email address is Jesse's email address is in the newsletter.
Correct.
Every week, either in that section of the West Bend Wire or down at the bottom. And so, yep, so that in your subject line, put West Bend Wire and ask a question. I think that's great. Thanks, Jesse. Any Alderman reports tonight on this side? How about this side? Oh, I had the pleasure of attending an Eagle Scout Court of Honor on Sunday. Ben Krieger goes to West Bend East. Pretty cool story. His dad's an Eagle Scout. His older brother became an Eagle Scout, I believe it was last year. Now Ben is an Eagle Scout. There's one more boy in the family who's a junior, turns 18 in August and he's under the gun to become an Eagle Scout as well and I'm pretty confident he'll do it. Great family, so congratulations to Ben Krieger. With that, we have an, yes, go ahead.
I'm just going to add something quickly. My son and granddaughter were in town last weekend and we showcased West Bend any, any way we could. We spent time at the farmer's market. We were at the fire station open house. We were at Shalom for several hours and we closed the day with the nature playground, so, and Culvers. But they're, they're from Illinois, so we really showed off West Bend on Saturday and I was exhausted, but the 10-year-old was fine. She was still going strong. But they were really impressed with the nature playground and all the things we have in town, so it was fun.
That's great. All right, we have an item that may be appropriate for closed session tonight under state statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The purpose of this meeting would be to discuss possible sale of land and/or incentives for development within the city of West Bend. With that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Burquist. Any comments, questions, discussions? With that, I will take a roll call vote. Sparts.
Aye.
Burquist.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Zingshaim.
Aye.
Butchlet.
Aye.
Engelking.
Aye.
Seizer.
Aye.
Sternig.
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed session. We will adjourn from closed session tonight. We will not reconvene and so go Brewers, beat the Cubs. All right. Did you hear that, right? Did you hear that?
Nope.